2021, we're gonna start the meeting with a prayer. Dwayne will start, lead us off with the prayer. And Sly will. You do the.
Y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening, God, I first of all want to thank you for for this day, God. Thank you for keeping us safe and watching over us like you do, God. And I just ask right now that you be with us in this meeting this evening, God, that every decision is made will be pleasing to you and will be the best decision for Madison County in accordance with your will. Just forgive or we fail you, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start the meeting off with the approval of the board minutes from July the 6th.
Yes, Mr. President, you have said minutes before you. I would ask if there are no changes of any kind of the board. Please approve those minutes.
Do we get a motion?
Motion.
Yes, Saka?
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have, um, should have a concern, it's citizen. Uh, is on here.
Mr. Banks, I just came in from outside and I did not see anyone that was unidentified out there, so I do not know, uh, Ms. Ruby White.
Okay, we had a Ruby White that signed up. That was the thing. Is that Ruby White? Come on up, Ruby White.
Good afternoon.
Give us your name and address, Ruby White.
My name is Ruby White, 316 Center Street, Floro, Mississippi. 39071.
It said Lincoln Street, that's why.
No, I wanna close. I wanna have something on Lincoln Street.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanna get permission to close off Center Street and Madison Street. And it's on Lincoln Street, at the end of Lincoln Street. I wanna have a birthday block party on August the 21st to bring the community back together from the COVID. There's so much been going on in our community, in the world, really, due to COVID. And I always celebrate my birthday, but this year, I wanna celebrate it with the community as a family and friends fun day. And I want permission to close the street out.
Okay. You wanna understand, like, is Lincoln Street the one you want to close?
The main street is Lincoln Street. It's right there in front of Banks and Espy Park.
Oh, okay. Wanna go right downside?
The main street, yes. But I wanna close the end of it on Center Street and Madison Street.
Okay. And that was just, so you'd be utilizing the park?
Yes, but blocking from traffic going.
There'll be no through traffic going through there? They'll just have to turn and go?
Yes.
Okay. Um. That's, uh, I don't have a real problem with that. What, what have we been doing when, uh, usually when someone requests a, a street closure like that for a temporary, have we, did we have any?
I'm not sure that anybody has requested something of that nature.
Oh, okay.
Been awhile, Supervisor Banks, uh, you know.
Well, I don't think it's gonna cause any, any traffic problems because it's not a, it's, it's, these streets are not really what you might call through streets because there are other ways of getting around this, right? Uh, at the end, uh.
How would they block it?
How would you block it?
With cones.
With cones?
I'm talking about with small ones, large ones. And the reason I say it's just for safety of the kids.
Small.
Reason I'm saying if they're small and vehicles may not see them, and then.
You know, just cones.
And you're gonna be advertising this all through the.
Yes.
The neighborhood. Okay.
And you trying to keep, I know the street can go straight downside the park.
You trying to see traffic from coming down through there fast?
Yes, to keep traffic from coming down because it will be a lot of kids. It'll be a lot of people coming through and we're trying to keep the traffic, you know, from coming down through there.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the mayor?
The mayor?
Oh, she's in the county.
She's talking to him now.
We don't have a mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to stop it.
Yeah.
Of course. But when, when the communities come, they wanna have a run, a walk, a community begging of the Sheriff's Department, notice. And sheriff looks at the pathway to see if they're gonna obstruct anything or.
Well, that's, okay.
Cooperates. Sheriff would know whether this was maybe he could dispatch a deputy to be there for a little while.
That was gonna be my only suggestion was, was if, if y'all approve it, block it off in a manner that's not permanent in nature to where if we did have to get a, a police car, an ambulance, or a fire truck down there, we, we certainly could do that. Don't try not to block it off with any cars or anything. Permanent in nature.
I would get Lawrence Mars to do it.
Okay.
Got a second?
Okay. The, the motion was made that if Sheriff's Department doesn't see it, any, um, any, any reason why we shouldn't approve it, that we would, we would make the motion to go ahead and, and file through with it and approve it. Uh, all in favor? I say aye.
I got one more to add to that. Here we go. We need date and time of the street. When it started, when you consider ending it.
She gave us August 21st.
August 21st from 3 to 9.
3 to 9. That's the motion I'd like to say.
Okay, that's the motion that was made. That's the motion that was, uh, second. And all in favor? I say aye.
And all of y'all, and all of y'all are invited.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, and I have one more thing. In, in the interest of the Magnolia Heights community, we don't have a sign. We never had a sign, not that I remember. And I wanna know, could y'all give us a sign that says, "Welcome to the community"?
Generally, those signs are being, are provided not by the county or the city, but by the.
Communities.
The, the, the homeowners.
Okay, okay.
Usually homeowners just, just put monies together and, and they put their signs up.
Okay, all right. Well, let's see.
Take that collection up at their birthday party.
That's a great idea.
That'd be a good time.
Take a collection where?
Yeah.
At birthday party, you get ready to have at.
For the community. Well, that'd be a good time.
Okay, okay.
And all the things you talk about in the community meetings, so you can have improvements in your community. I like that. Thank you for coming.
All right. And thank y'all for the part.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have consent items. Everybody taking a look at the consent items? Anybody got any questions about any of the consent items? Or are you ready to go ahead and give me a motion on the consent item?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there was no opposition. On the business items, we wanna welcome and, and, uh, Dr. Mary Sims Johnson, Madison County Citizen Service Agency here with her, I guess this is the audit report chair.
Thank you. Greetings to each of you, to Mr. Banks and to the entire Board of Supervisors. It is certainly a pleasure to stand before you tonight to provide our annual service report and also our independent audit report for the fiscal year 1920. For the sake of time, I have a copy of that report and would like to draw your attention to page number four.
Page number four, okay? I think we got it here, Doc.
Page number four.
We certainly thank you for your support. Uh, we extend our sincere gratitude to the Board of Directors for MCCSA as well as the staff that we consider our winning team because they are the people who actually make the rubber hit the road and work tirelessly to provide services for the citizens of Madison County. On page four, there's an overview of program services that we have provided for the fiscal year 1920. Uh, COVID-19, of course, caused some challenges for us with the fiscal year 1920. However, we were able to provide services, uh, in unusual ways, in unusual circumstances. However, we exceeded the client unit of services that we provided for the fiscal year 2019. So I'm going to provide that total. For the fiscal year 2020, we provided 173,989 client contacts. For the fiscal year 2019, we provided 109,072 client contacts. We've also provided for you an overview of revenue, the federal grants with percentages. And I would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have for me regarding our activities for services for the fiscal year 1920.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or anything like that?
I just say that you, I just say that you have more cash to work with this past year than you did the prior year, which is always good.
We, we did because we received some COVID funds.
Yeah.
So that was to our advantage. Okay. Uh, at this time, uh, I would like to introduce our independent auditor for the fiscal year 1920, Mr. Willoughby Sims with Will, with Sims CPA Firm. So he's going to come at this time to present an overview of our 1920 fiscal year independent audit. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I greet you in the name of my Lord and my Savior, Jesus the Christ. Again, it's an, an opportunity that I'm thankful for to be able to stand before you all and to report on one of your component units, the Madison County Citizens Union. I've completed the audit and again, I commend Dr. Johnson and the staff and the board for doing an exceptionally good job. There's no audit findings, there's no problems. Ms. Johnson ain't run off with any money. And as Gerald pointed out, one of the good things that's going now is their cash flow balance has increased from last year because they're, as she said, got additional funds, but also they're making better use of those expenditures. I don't have a whole lot to, to, to say, so if you have any question, I'll try to answer those questions and.
Motion to acknowledge.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed and all opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good job. Good presentation.
I, I would like to take an opportunity to recognize those Board of Director members that are present with us tonight. And that's going to be Mr. Timmy Pickett, our board chair, and Mr. Will Sly, who is going to be our Secretary of Treasurer. And we want to thank them for their support. Thank you.
Mary. Mary. Yes.
While, while Doctor's here, I wanna tell them that, um, MDHS recently accused this organization of some violations in handling lIguit monies. And, uh, we were able to work with them over three months. We had a formal administrative hearing and we had a suspect spectacular victory. Not only did they win, they won so greatly that MDHS, the hearing officer, said they had to change their whole manual. So I'm just saying, I'm here to commend Dr. Sims Johnson and, uh, the entire organization for handling the money, standing up to the state of Mississippi in this instance because we won it. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Espy. I would also like to extend our sincere gratitude to the legal team with Mr. Espy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I feel good when we straighten the state out.
Okay. All right, uh, next we have, uh, Mr. Stanford Beasley, Kent Housing Authority.
Good afternoon.
All right.
Apologize, I've been in the field all day, so I'm blue jean down. I come before you on this parcel to ask for the, the taxes to be abated. There was a parcel of land we purchased, uh, it's about 26 acres total. It's over here off the end of Dobson Avenue. It doesn't really have a physical address and I think it's in your packet there. But it was three different parcels and for some odd reason, when it was conveyed over, the attorneys kinda didn't get something right on the last parcel. So it was, when I came before you and y'all gave me the initial abatement, you approved it, but one, one of those parcels ended up being left off because it still showed that the bank owned the, the property. And for some reason, I don't know what happened. Well, we went back and since corrected that. And as a result, we're coming back to add that last parcel. I think all three of them presented unbeknownst to us because the, we didn't even get the tax statement. So we found out we were in arrears in taxes because it was still going to Trustmark Bank, who we purchased the property from. So just oversight on our part, we thought they all were included in the initial action. So if you, if you look at it, it'll be, it's like one parcel to the right, one, a half acre in the middle, and then another 12 acres here. And for some reason, they did the one to the right, the half acre in the middle, and they skipped the one to the left. And that's what I'm before you.
Mr. Chairman, I reckon they saw, they did fill out our form and they showed that their taxes are.
Do we need a motion or?
Yes.
Motion?
Is that Saka?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll straighten.
Also, I need to let you all know that, uh, I'm gonna get with Dr. Johnson as well. Uh, it's preliminary that we are the assigned agency for Madison County for the Mississippi Ramp Program. So I will be back before you all to kinda fill you in on the details. And, uh, and I don't know why they didn't pick their agency, they chose us, but it's for the assistance payments for housing and utilities. And I think they should've went to them, but somehow we got selected, so. And I'm gonna see if I can maybe sub it out to the people that know what they're doing. It's he fault, the state, so. Uh, but anyway, I'll come back before y'all and get with her and we'll get the details to you all so you all can present it to your individuals who need assistance. Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Heath Hall.
Heath in the Hall.
Uh, Heath, Heath Hall, Strategic Marketing Group LLC.
Well, hopefully I, I bring good news, um, today. I, um, would've turned this in earlier, um, as the, as the deadline approached. But if you look down in that first table, July 2021, we had 4,994 followers to Facebook. And so I was just hoping that in the last hour, we would go over 5,000. But if you remember that in June, on June the 15th, 2020, I came before you and, um, after a number of field tests that Strategic Marketing Group, um, conducted, I suggested that we put $175 behind, um, our boost. And that is what, what we have, um, we have done in the last, um, 12 months. We've worked with elected officials, we've worked with our, our administrator, um, department, um, directors, um, Makita, the Madison County, uh, Business League, election commissioners, the Census Bureau, and others to, um, attain, develop, and, um, um, promote the content on Facebook. And also, um, several more as we, we approached that. When we began in July, we actually began it in July 2021, we were at, uh, 1,737 followers. We are now, um, as we stand here today, at 4,995, 94 followers, which is 188% increase in followers. Um, to me, that is a tremendous increase, no matter how you slice it or how, how you dice it. Um, I've broken it down by, um, by month, um, the, the, the final six months. And let me explain to you how come I did. Is that we are operating on a Facebook page that is a government Facebook page. It does not look like your personal Facebook page. It does not look like your business Facebook page. It acts very different. Um, it, it, it treats us very differently. I have to be certified twice a year in order to operate it. So does, so, so does Shelton. From the months of late September to the middle of January, the, um, uh, Facebook shut down our ability to be able to boost or pay for, um, uh, pay for or, or, uh, posts to be marketed. So that had a tremendous impact on October, November, December, and January. So I wanted to compare apples to apples, um, for you. So January is kinda out of that. But if you look at February, it starts to, starts to build back up fairly significant. You look at May, 44,000 people, 655, uh, people visited our Facebook page. That's amazing. If I looked at, if I looked at that like I would a, um, um, a, a retail store, I would be really excited about 44,000 people a month coming into my retail store because I made $175 investment. So we're, we are happy with, 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 with those numbers. When we break those numbers down, and, and, and look, once again, these are not Heath Hall numbers. These are strictly Facebook numbers. Easy to read, easy for me to be able to put on a piece of paper for you. Our average number of Facebook posts per month were 11. And if you break that down by business day, I think that's one out of, out of, um, every other, uh, business day. When we, when we target, and you'll see this later on in the document, but when we target, um, who we're sending this information to is Canton plus 30 miles. So we're making sure that we're not missing anybody. Um, by age, you know, the, the, um, the, the age is what it is. It's 45 to 65 plus is, is 50%. Now, on every post, I get what the ages are, I get what the gender is. And we had some up, up, ups and, and downs. When we were doing the census, we would tend to see younger people participate in, in, in the census. Um, by county, 70%, 76%. Um, Madison County, 10 Rankin, nine Hines, five, um, other. And, um, that's probably my five kids who, who go, uh, to college up in North Mississippi. So, um, so a really, um, a, a good report, one that I think we can, we can all be very, very proud of. Um, I, I think that, that as, as we continue this process, um, we're gonna make some, some, some tweaks to it. We're gonna come up with some ways that, um, or, or, or freeways, um, to, to promote it. Um, I think that we should put some more money behind it. Um, and let me clarify because some people have asked me questions about this right here. Strategic Marketing Group has not paid another $175 to do this. This is flow-through money. So we're only billed for, uh, for what we pay to, to, to boost this. And this is use or lose money. So if I don't spend money January, February, and March when I couldn't, I can't get that 175 back times three in order to post. So I, I'm happy with it. I hope that, that, um, that, that, uh, you're also happy with it. I, I also, and, and then I'll take any, any questions that you have, is that if you remember back in, in September, October, that period of time where Facebook took us down, we came out with our app. And the, um, you know, our only marketing tool really, um, directly is our, is our Facebook page. But, um, when I, um, checked on it, um, a, a week or so ago, we have 534 people who have downloaded the app. Um, 80% of those people are going to board meetings. They're going to look at the agenda. They're going to watch the board meeting, um, live. They go onto archives. So they're very interested in what you guys, what you guys, um, are, 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 are doing. I, I wanna give a, a very, very special thank you to, um, to Shelton and to Dwayne because in three days, we spoke to Apple, Facebook, and Google. And I think all of our minds were fried at the end of all of that. So thank you for your help on, on that. Um, and we're can, and we're gonna move forward. Now that we're over the 500 number, the rule of thumb tells us that we can now start doing push notifications. And a, as you know, push notifications, um, I, I go into a website, I type in so many characters, we're limited on the number of characters that we can type in. Um, I hit push and it goes out to, to all of our, all of our people. You know, a meeting notice, um, a, a, a road closed, a bridge closed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what you'll see as we move forward is that number will work parallel with the number of people that we have on Facebook. At least my experience tells me that. So I, I am more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Mr. President, I just have one statement and this one question. Uh, one statement is, this is doing exactly what we intended to as a board, is to get the facts out to the public. And what you're sending out is that it's just the facts, what this board voted on.
Yes, sir, it is.
And from June 20th to July 21st, you know, we started off 1737 followers. Now we have 4994. That is excellent. The question I have, I see here in yellow down at the bottom of the first page, it says 75, 74% of posts were seen due to paid posting. So the 175 that you have or that you're using, so 74% of people that's following us really came because of the posting?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they do. We, we average spending about $232.80, 86 cents a month and, um, and paid boosting anything over $175, um, we credit back to the account.
Okay, so it's, the count is 175, but basically boosting is very important.
Oh, it's extremely important. We, you know, we would be back, you know, if, if, if we didn't boost, uh, we would go from 167 maybe to 1,400.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hall, thank you very much for your.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
We got a motion, a second to acknowledge the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
First item I have for you is a summary change order with Hemp Hill Construction. This is for the onsite water and sewer utilities project that we did in support of Project Pine. It does adjust some quantities within the contract, but does not increase the cost of the contract at all. And we also request that the board president be able to sign the attached change order.
Okay. Does that second? All in favor? Okay.
Second item I have for you is a transmittal letter to M.DOT from the board asking for authorization to advertise for construction for the Highway 22 at King Ranch Intersection Improvement Project.
All in favor?
All right. Well, I have, thank you.
When are y'all gonna start pushing stumps on the Lee's Road?
We've got, the rain hindered us a little bit, but we've got, uh, ceasefire's supposed to be out of the way middle of this weekish. And as soon as they're out of the way, we're gonna start. So we're, we're waiting on. So we're, we're waiting on seaspire at the moment, but.
How long you think it's gonna take to clear those stumps?
I'd say a week, week and a half.
And then when can we go to construction?
Hell, we, as soon as we get done with that, we'll be able to go to construction. We, we've got some issues with a few things, but we'll be able to.
How long you think construction will take?
I would say about three months, I would imagine. And while that's going on, we can get our next construction project underway to actually do the overlay.
Tim, do you have an update on the parking spaces at the, uh, South Madison Tax Assessor Collector's Office?
I do. Um, the contractor was out there today, marking the, uh, staking out for the curb. And so as soon as we get enough dry weather to get him in there, he's gonna start.
Probably won't be this week, though.
It doesn't look like it.
But anyway, he's, he's on top of it and.
He is, I spoke to him this morning.
Couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Tim, do you have an update on the Stoff Road Bridge?
It is open. It is open. It opened today.
Stop bridge.
They're working. Uh, they're still within their time limit.
The time limit is, what, the end of this month?
Uh, let me check on that. Um, I'll let you know the exact date. I can't remember off the top of my head.
We, we want to start.
Oh, we're gonna.
Fees on the very first day.
Yeah, we're gonna start charging fees the very first minute.
Still on that. And, yes, to say, my colleague, Carl Banks, said somebody's car was floating down Bean Lucky Road. Where we put in this power, what, million and a half, $2 million dollar bridge is down there.
Yeah.
It wasn't you, Tim. Uh, it was a brand new state aid bridge, that I told him that they weren't gonna be able to get to the bridge when the water came. And, and it's happening. But we thank you for the bridge, but we still can't use the road.
Well. You're welcome for the bridge.
All right. Okay, um, Attorney Espy.
Mr. Chairman, the District III Supervisor is asking that the county enter into a MOU with the City of Ridgeland. I don't need to read the whole thing, but basically, the, uh, City of Ridgeland will agree to cut some grass and pick up a little along the road, county roads. And in consideration, the, um, county will, uh, will, uh, will use culverts and dredge some of the areas in the city. Uh, and, um, especially after, after it rains. And the MOU is, is there for everyone to read. And I recommend that, um, that the MOU be approved and sent on, signed by the president, and sent on to the proper authorities.
Ms. President, basically what it amounts to, the City of Ridgeland came and asked, uh, the annex area that they incorporated not long ago, there's a couple of roads that are gravel, and they asked us to, uh, grade those roads. But, uh, more and more, we got to talking, we did some, uh, swapping out. They're gonna do some grass cutting on Lake Castle and North Livingston Road, uh, to offset the grading that we'll be doing on, within the city. Since they do not have a grader, and so, but they're gonna, uh, cut the grass. And I talked with Cornitas about it as well, and, and, uh, and he's good with it, uh, as well. So, um, I'd like to make a motion for approval at this point.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, um, there's a resolution honoring the life of Superintendent Clarence Melvin Ray. And it said forth here, Mr. Ray was, uh, well-known in the community, served as 10 years of the, as Superintendent of the County Schools, and 20 years as Assistant Superintendent. And, um, had a great and bountiful life. I won't read all of this, but I'm just recommending the board accept this, approve it, uh, put it in the minutes, and then send this to the family of Mr. Ray.
Motion. Is that second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sheldon.
Mr. President, Supervisors, a couple of items for your attention. Behind item number 50 is a special exception application notice. You will see that, uh, someone has filed, um, for a special exception with the City of Canton to use the property here on the northeast corner of the square that we are sitting in. And they are intending to use this as a convenience store, gas station, and coffee shop. As, uh, landowners of the immediate vicinity, you're being provided this information so that you can determine whether or not you wish to appeal or object to this application. So do you want to just acknowledge this notice? Or do you want to ask your attorney to file an objection for the planned use of this land?
I'm supposed to do an analogy.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item behind item, uh, number 51 is a letter from the Mississippi, uh, Veterans Affairs, Mississippi Veterans Affairs Board. They are advising us of changes in the requirements for someone to become a Veteran Services Officer. So I would like to present this to you for you to acknowledge the change. I have already talked with our Veterans Affairs Officer. Uh, he is in the process of completing current certification and will be certified by the, uh, deadline, uh, for this new law, uh, of additional requirements.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's been acknowledged.
Yeah, uh, last item, 52, um, the Sheriff's Office has received a state grant through the Mississippi Wireless Communications Fund for the purchase of two license plate readers. Uh, this purchase has to, uh, be conducted through the state's Information Technology Service Agency. So we need your permission to initiate the procurement process with ITS for these license plate readers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Banks, second that motion?
She was second.
She did?
Okay. I can, I can hear.
That was in that right ear.
That right ear was good, didn't it?
How's your golf game in all this rain?
I think we own item 53.
Yes, sir. Item 53 is the approval of the budget amendments and the indefinite cash transfers.
Okay.
Make a motion for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
She'll beat you to it.
Yeah.
She's on the jury.
Yeah.
The next item is 54 through 56 is the approval of the general claims docket, and then two payroll dockets.
Motion for approval?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 57 is approval of the wedding report from the Justice Court.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reviving cheers.
And number 58 is the approval of the Fleet Corps claim docket.
Motion, second? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. President?
Nothing. Okay.
Nothing, Mr. President?
Nothing. Old business.
I got one old business. Several months ago, there was a, a lady up here, uh, requesting us to take the makers over on Francis Road, that right off Way Road. And there was a committee forum, I think it was Union Bank and I believe Trey. And reason, and, and I think you went out, but, uh, she had a, there was a butane tank in the way.
Yeah.
That, that we could not accept it, over that butane tank was in the way. She'd have moved butane tank there. So. I'm ready for the committee report, unless you all need to go back out.
Uh, I, I probably do, 'cause I don't recall the incident, but I think I know where Francis.
Right down from the church. What's the name of the church?
Milton Grove.
Milton Grove, right there to the.
To the left?
To the left.
Yeah. We went in there. Okay.
So in other words, you're not gonna be here next meeting, so we just put it off to the meeting, second meeting in July?
In August.
Yeah, in August.
That'll work.
Wait, 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 give me that address.
Yeah, it's off Way Road, Francis, uh.
Francis Grove, and it's, and it's, oh, was that you on that committee sheet?
I don't think it was, wow.
I don't know who that was.
There's, there's a church by the name Milton Grove. Soon as you pass Milton Grove Church, it's right to your left.
Milton Grove.
Yeah, Milton Grove is, um, ooh, you pop, you cross the, what's that, what's that road?
David Cross.
Davis Crossing. Yeah, once you pass Davis Crossing, you keep on up, and you'll see Milton Grove to your right. Francis is gonna be down about 400 feet or so to the left.
How many miles, how long is the road we're trying to adapt?
Over there in the middle, about four tent, five tent.
Yeah, it's nothing. It's, it's, it's several, there's several people live in, in there, on that road. It's just, uh.
And there's several other little roads like that, that do take public roads, that's the only one that's still in there private. So the second meeting in August.
Okay.
Yeah, second meeting in August, I'll tell everybody.
All right.
Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, new business. Okay.
Two items. Uh, the first is for our park restrooms. The State Health Department, uh, requires a, um, review of our wastewater treatment plan at Fairview. I had to wait until the lease was enrolled on the public, uh, land records. So I have that, and I need approval to pay, electronically pay a $412.50 fee to the State Department of Health to get them to review our waste treatment plans for that location.
Make a motion for approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next item is budget hearings. We haven't actually set a date. We've talked about several. Uh, I know we have supervisors out this week. You said you're not gonna be here for the first meeting in August?
Uh, in August, no.
Okay. So what about the week, what about next week, which would be Tuesday the 27th or Thursday the 29th? Once we kind of get past that.
I'd be at the 27th, I'm flat out on the 29th, and I wouldn't be back until sometime next week after.
Okay. This is 27th an okay day for everybody?
What day is it?
It'll be a week from tomorrow.
What time, uh?
If, if that's the only day, I would say we need to start at nine.
That's good, that's good.
Okay, so we'll just continue the meeting from today until then, instead of adjourn?
Instead of adjourn, we just get up and walk out and don't, don't adjourn, just get up late.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so the 27th, we'll set up the, we'll set up the hearings for the 27th.
Okay, um, let's see, next, I think we, we sort of have a going to.
Two items.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
They're going to have a closed determination.
The second for closed determination?
Second?
All in favor? Uh, okay. Shut it down.